Welcome everyone this evening to the Mount Pleasant Town Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, June 10th, 2014. The appointed hour is 6:00 PM. I think all of my council members are here although one is vacant from his seat.
There he is. Come on, Ken.
First thing on the agenda and the second thing are prayer and pledge. If you will stand and join me, I would ask the chaplain to lead us in prayer and Ken, if you will read us and lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being able to come here with the elected leaders today and just ask your special blessing on them and us as a town that we will continue to seek you in all that we do and protect those that are out protecting us, especially the fire folks and the police officers. Ask your special blessing in your name, Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
And as we say the pledge, you know, the landing at Normandy, the 70 year anniversary, I actually got to sit and talk with someone that landed there this past week. It was, as a marine, I'm specially moving, so if you'll think of that when we play the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge like three times today now. Mr. Pagliarini, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, Mayor, we're in compliance.
Now, the fourth thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Motion taken.
Have a motion and a second and discussion on favor by the ayes carry. We have a couple of public hearings. Charlie, you've got the first one for the budget?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, council, this is a public hearing to receive input on a proposed municipal budget for the 2014 fiscal year. The proposed general fund appropriations totaled $70,928,698. Special revenue fund appropriations totaled $12,687,729. Capital fund project appropriations stand at a total of $19,816,542. The grand total appropriations is $103,432,969. Less interfund transfers, the net appropriation is $87,874,413. The millage rate in the proposed budget stands at 41.3 mils and there are three fee increases included in the proposed budget, the stormwater equivalent residential rate, the business license restructuring, and a smaller fee, planning and building for building review. Separate public hearings were held for the millage and the fee increases on March 11th and on April 8th. Again, a public hearing to receive input.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on this subject? Carrying none, this public hearing is closed. We have another public hearing, Ms. Farrell?
Good evening. I do have one public hearing tonight for a request to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map. This is to change land use designation on three parcels from waterfront gateway to high-density residential. These parcels are located in the area of Cooper River Drive and Wingo Way. Does include the Tides Horizontal Property Regime, the Tides Medical Arts Building, and then also an approximate 1.93 acre parcel of vacant land located on Wingo Way.
Anyone here to speak on this tonight? Carrying none, this public hearing is closed. And now I believe we have some recognition.
Mayor Page, council members, please come forward.
That's why they recognize.
Mayor Page, council members, ladies and gentlemen, I believe we have some state champions of Wando High School.
I'm gonna invite my fellow Wando warrior, Bogarts, to recognize these fine state champions. Yes. I didn't know y'all were here. You were dressed so nice. I was looking for a hoodie outfit. Hey Lucy, how are you?
I'm good. Everything's good?
Well, we'll begin ladies first. What we have here is the 2014 state champion, Wando High School, with a record of 21 and 2. They defeated JL Mann High School. This is their second straight championship, the sixth championship for Coach Champ, and the 10th in school history. All right, how many young ladies are gonna be returning to play again? Wow.
We look forward to seeing you.
They'll be back here next year. And you know, I was just here, as you know, just a couple of months ago for the boys' basketball team. I'm gonna tell you, Coach Hayes, I can get used to welcoming these state champions. This is great stuff. It's great stuff. And that leads us through the boys. And I have a quick little funny story. Lennon and I being Wando grads, but in the, I finished up football season in 1980 and it ran into 1981. And I gotta do something between football and track and I'm definitely not gonna wrestle. And all of a sudden he said, "We're gonna start a sport, Wando called soccer." So I was on the first soccer team in 1981. I want you to know, we did have a winning season, but we weren't that good. Anyway, we had, what's his name? Gosh, Tom.
Rod.
Thank you. Skating, skating. That being said though, our Wando Boys Soccer Team, 2014 state champions, you defeated JL Mann High School also. Okay, yep. Your record was 29, 1, and 1. This is your second title in four years and sixth overall. Congratulations. I recognize that young man standing next to your coach over here in a white shirt. About 12 years ago, he and his family rolled past me and moved down the street. He was, I guess, about six years old. Next thing, you know, the first thing came out the next day was a soccer goal. So he was on his way. Congratulations, Jackson. I understand you're going to Wofford, right?
Yes, sir.
Very good, very good. Coaches, y'all have anything you wanna say? Ms. Beckham?
Always. We are very proud of all these young people. We so appreciate the support of the town of Mount Pleasant. We could not be the school we are without this entire community council and people. But I do have to brag one more time, we got a report Friday, our athletic program is number one in South Carolina. We won the 48ers.
As a matter, as a matter of fact, before you go, speaking of that, I had a Wando Athletics press release I wanted to read out loud. It says, "The South Carolina Athletic Administrators Association announces the winners of its 2013-14 Directors Cup Award. This prestigious award recognizes the top athletic program in each classification as determined by points scored in 22 sports in the South Carolina High School League Playoff System. Class 4A Wando High School Athletic Director Bob Hayes, Principal Lucy Beckham. Congratulations, guys."
Good job.
All right, ladies, we'll see you here next year. employees. Ask them to come forward, please. Jason Hodge, Johnny Port, and Wayne Potter, would you please come forward? Jason, welcome. Thanks for coming by this evening. I haven't been outside most of the day.
Right.
That's right. Ladies and gentlemen, these five gentlemen have been recognized as our employees of the body. And let me tell you why. They have contributed greatly to a long-lasting and important project in this community. And as a result, it has saved citizens, taxpayers, us, over $100,000 thanks to their work. Story goes like this. Many of you are familiar with the sound wall at Highway 17, particularly the half-mile section that extends from the intersection of 17 and Long Point Road down towards Beaumont subdivision. Well, in order for South Carolina DOT to accept that portion of the wall, the town was obligated, under agreement, to apply what's known as an anti-graffiti coating. And so these gentlemen took this idea on and not just, not just accepted the challenge, what they did was they actually sampled coatings and layers and selected which product would be the best. And that was very important for us because that helped us to determine the specifications that would include in the bid package to be bid to a private company to be able to do the work. And so we did that. And the bids came back in and the bids were over $130,000 to do that half-mile portion. These gentlemen said, "That's not good enough." They said, "We can do it and we can do it better and we can do it cheaper." So they asked permission to go ahead and do it and it was granted. And they went ahead and did it and in 45 hours, they completed the job. Let me tell you, let me tell you how they did it. They realized that although the company had bid a bucket truck to be able to apply coating, that a bucket truck, which also requires lane closures and everything that goes along with that, that a bucket truck wasn't necessary and that an A-frame ladder, traditional A-foot A-frame ladder, could work just as well. But not only that, also in the quotes that we received were application devices that were, you know, pretty complex application devices. They said, "No, no, we can do better than that." So using equipment we already have in-house, they, you know, geri- geri- if you will, equipment to have a vertical line sprayer that could do the job just as effectively. So they did it, they did it effectively, they did it in short time, and as a result, saved it, they did it for under $30,000 and saved all of us over 100 grand.
Nice.
Should the chair of public service make that picture?
Where is that guy?
We should pay him back. This should be continued.
There you go. Save less money, let me give you one.
I already told you.
So they got $10,000?
Yeah, yeah. $10,000. Don't forget to call one place.
It might encourage people to save more money if we did, but...
That's insane.
Let's see if we can have council meetings.
Always good stuff. Moving right along, item number six is the approval of the minutes for the May 13, 2014 Town Council Meeting and the May 2014 financial statement. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Varge?
No, I think Ms. Santos wants to ask you something after this is voted on.
Oh, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes carry. Ms. Santos?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as we have done before, I'd like to have the opportunity to move up some items to the beginning in order for some of these folks to be able to, you know, be able to go home early if they'd like. That would be item number 11A, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. And actually, I like seeing all these people here. I wish they'd stay all night, but that's five of me. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes carry.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes carry. So with that, we will take...
Correspondents' public statements first.
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Yeah. We'll take, before we move into that new item, we'll take correspondence and public statements. Is there anyone here signed up to speak?
None, not in this side.
Okay, thank you. That I anticipated. Moving on to 11, under council business, new business, 11A, item number one. This is an action item to direct town staff to neither discuss nor prepare any amendments or revisions to the parking license agreement. And I believe that was put on the agenda by Mr. O'Neill, so I will turn it over to you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I asked for this item to be placed on the agenda. At this point in time, we understand that we've confirmed a submittal by the developer that he believes complies with the parking license agreement as stated. So I would move that we defer any action on this item until staff is able to determine whether or not they are in compliance with the parking resolution.
And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion to defer and a second, any discussion?
Brief.
Yes.
First of all, thank you, Madam Mayor, council. As I understand from Councilman O'Neill, the applicant, who I think is here, has submitted a plan, was that, did that come in the last day or so?
Just a few hours ago.
A few hours ago? Okay. So, and the representation of the current scheme that ordinances everything else, correct? We just need some time to go through that?
That's the representation from the applicant.
Okay, that's all I need to hear.
Okay, thank you. And I believe we have some people signed up to speak on this issue.
Tex Small.
Mr. Small?
I think since it's deferred, I'll just thank you.
Thank you.
Great, Taylor?
Sign up to speak on 134 of Capitol Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Andy Gouter?
Same for me. All eight.
Before I could just wanna clarify.
Ms. Thomas, Stokes, Marshall, yes, ma'am?
Okay, the motion is to defer the action on this based on, the motion is to defer action on this based on the fact that the applicant has submitted plans that were received today. And those plans will be reviewed by staff to determine whether or not it informs.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Nichols?
The deferment, is that a time certain or just into the future? What's the intent behind that?
I'd have to consult with the planning director about how long it would take to review properly such an application. As far, what is the typical review period?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Are you satisfied with that?
Satisfied with that?
Before next meeting.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Glass?
If we vote no on the deferral for clarification, would that mean that we would address it and vote on it, up or down?
So do we, everyone understand the clarification? Okay. So we have a motion and a second, we have a motion and a second to defer this until the review period is over for the submitted app. Aye, opposed, and the ayes carry. Item number two is an action item to direct town staff to prepare an ordinance reducing the 75-foot height allowance provided in the Coleman Boulevard, Ben Sawyer section of the urban corridor overlay district. Again, I'm going to defer to Mr. O'Neill, who asked this to be put on the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we did have this put on the agenda and we had a lot of discussion at the planning committee. We've had a lot of discussion, heard from a lot of concerned citizens on this issue. And, you know, I think we're really talking about three specific areas in town where the 75-foot impact, which we all know to be Sea Island, Multry Plaza, and the former Family Dollar site, which is now developed, so that's kind of become a moot point. But, you know, I think at the time we set forth with this plan, and, you know, I believe in the urban corridor overlay district, I believe in the plan, but we had no evidence of what, you know, 75-foot building, much less a 60-foot building, would look like. And now that we do, and we have a 60-foot building in existence, it's not, there's evidence now for me to think that potentially what we've done with 75 feet is too tall. I don't know that I have in my mind a specific height for which I'd wanna see this reduced to, but 25% taller than the Boulevard is, in my mind, too much for those areas. You know, I think this council is still getting their arms around exactly what a 55-foot or 65-foot building looks like, Heritage Trust Federal Credit Union, approximately 52 feet, I think that's in keeping with character. I don't know that I have a specific height in mind, but I would like to move that we send this back to the planning commission to consider an ordinance that would lower the height in the urban corridor overlay district.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send back to planning commission discussion of 75-foot height on Coleman Boulevard. Any discussion? Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, and I wanna thank Councilman O'Neill for putting this on. I echo much of what he just said. If I'm being honest with myself, if I did not appreciate, I don't, I don't think I actually appreciated what a 55 or 60-foot building on Coleman Boulevard looked like. I wasn't a part of that vote to begin with years ago, but I can appreciate it now that one has been built and been talked about a great deal. I, I too will support and would urge that we look at 55 feet or actually less for the two, well, all three properties that need to be included, I guess, technically. And what I wonder whether, is whether we should send it back, Councilman O'Neill, with a specific number in mind so that the commission can have at it that way, or whether your intention is to kind of let the commission bat it around?
My belief would be to let the commission bat it around. It would have to come back through the planning committee and back to this council for consideration anyway, at which time we would certainly be able to change anything that we wanted to.
And to be clear, and you guys know this better than I, but whether we set a certain number tonight or not, the proper method is it must, because it's a zone change, must go back through the commission process. It's not, is that correct, Mr. Pagliarini?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if it gets sent back with a specific recommendation or just with asking them for guidance, would the process be one, one planning commission meeting and then whatever they come back with, if anything, two more full reads, I guess, if we decide to do something as a council?
That's correct, sir. If an ordinance is proposed out of the planning commission, it would go to the committee and then there would be two, two readings of the ordinance for it to pass.
Yeah, just one other thing. The two properties that, the three properties, the two that are, have not been redeveloped have had, correct me if I'm wrong, they've had 75 feet for approximately six, six or seven years at this point?
I'd have to ask Ms. Farrell?
Grab recommendations were 2008. That's where the 75 came from.
Okay, so arguably, six years. Is there anything that's been submitted or on file? My fear is this, that during the process of sending it back to the commission and whatever happens there, and then a couple of more months, that here comes a submission and I would like to not get into, it seems unlikely, but would like to not be in a position where we get stuck, if you will, with somebody comes forward with a 75-foot submission and we're in the process. Is there, is there any shorter route regardless of whether it's 75, 65, 55, or 45, or must it go through the commission and back up if there was a reduction? And I guess that's from Mr. Pagliarini or anyone else.
It has to go through planning commission, whether council decides to hold regular meetings or not is an issue.
Right, we could have a special meeting if we so desire to take it on and move quickly or more nimbly if that, if we felt like we needed to.
Yes, sir.
I'm good with that. Thank you for my...
Any other discussion? Ms. Santos?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I agree with, Chris squared here. I think, I think their comments were spot on and I certainly agree that I think that the planning commission would be a much faster way to take a look at this than having to go through any other options that we had batted around before. So I agree with this.
Thank you. I'll hold my comments until we hear speakers. Who do we have signed up? Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mayor, Jimmy Bagwell.
Excuse me just one moment, I have one more council member. Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, um...
You go ahead, you come up.
He can go.
Just, no, we'll let Councilmember Smith finish.
Madam Mayor, I just wanna make sure that I understand correctly, from our planning committee meeting earlier, it's been tossed around two properties and three properties. We're talking about three properties, the Multry Plaza, the Sea Island Shopping Center, and the multiple properties that abut or adjoining what is now the Boulevard. Three separate sites that we're talking about, is that correct?
For clarification, the height allowances at Multry Plaza, now the Boulevard, and Sea Island Shopping Center. There's also a resolution that affects the properties abutting the Boulevard because they are in the same block. And with design, I believe they would also be able to achieve 75 feet. And I'll have to defer that to Ms. Farrell.
Mayor Page, you're correct, but that provision, the ordinance, also applies to the other two properties that you mentioned, that those adjacent property owners were also, who submitted some sort of cohesive development plan, that they could be afforded the 75 feet, for example, if they were a property eventing Multry Plaza.
So the properties abutting Multry Plaza within the block though, not past, not past Simmons Street?
That's right.
So it would be a redevelopment of the front properties across from Multry Middle School down to the church?
It would be the properties from Multry Plaza, Simmons Street, basically, no, past the church, to the...
Oops.
To Vincent.
Okay, all the way to Vincent Drive. And the Sea Island Shopping Center property is also in a block, so would that also travel down to the house, the old hotel, and the county property on the corner?
It would work back, no, it does not go as far as the county property.
So it wouldn't go to Rifle Range Road?
To Shermer.
It would go to Shermer, it would go to the back?
Yes, ma'am.
So everyone is clear on that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just wanna make sure that people understood the scope of what's being talked about here.
So 75-foot is not actually three pieces of property with the resolution, it's three pieces of property plus adjoining properties within a block? Thank you. Mr. Bagwell?
Well, Madam Mayor, I was gonna speak on this, now I'm even in more state of shock, a state of shock than I was before I came here. I, I did not realize that myself, but I'm here tonight to speak against the 75-foot height in those three properties. And now it sounds like from Simmons Street all the way down to Oops, and then from Sea Island all the way down to Shermer, and from Mike's Bikes basically down to the...
Subway, past Subway, yes, sir.
Past Subway. So that is outrageous. It will ruin Coleman Boulevard. Coleman Boulevard and Shem Creek area are the heart of Mount Pleasant. Even though we're at one end of the town, we are still the heart of Mount Pleasant. This is where the town started. I think that I agree completely with Councilman O'Neill and also with Nichols and with Councilman Santos. I think we need to take a hard look at this. I think that we, what we need to do is to have some type of moratorium on any development in those areas until this situation is completely hashed out. I would recommend public hearings on this. I would bring the people in into this, 'cause I, I tell you the truth, based on my input in the last six months, I can't find anybody that wants 75, even 60 or 55-foot buildings in that area. I would get the public's input on it. I would put a moratorium on this development and I would make sure that nothing happened until this was completely heard out. Before I came down here tonight, I got a phone call from former First Lady Ann Edwards. And she said, "Jimmy, I'm just too tired to come down tonight, but would you please tell them that I believe we've got to do everything we can to preserve the integrity of the old historic district and of the Shem Creek area? It is vital to this, to the future of this town that we preserve our heritage and our traditions." So I'm asking y'all to take all of this into consideration. I know you will. I know you'll do what's best for the town of Mount Pleasant. The people are demanding it, they wanna hear from you on this subject. Please do what you can to help us on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bagwell.
Charles...
It is vital to the future of this town that we preserve our heritage and our traditions." So I'm asking y'all to take all of this into consideration. I know you will. I know you'll do what's best for the town of Mount Pleasant. The people are demanding it, they want to hear from you on this subject. Please do what you can to help us on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bagwell.
Charles Dickinson. Charles Dickinson.
That was covered.
Nancy Fairless?
It was covered with one exception.
Ma'am, just for point of order, if you'll please come up and state your name and address for the record. Thank you. We just want you to join us down here up front, that's all.
You look great tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak and for your wise words. The only thing that hasn't been said, except that my heart is with everybody that spoke, the only person that I saw that was at all excited about a sixty-five-foot building was ten years old. "Wow, that's really cool." And I said, "Why?" And she said, "Oh, it's like New York or Chicago." So I rest my case.
For the record, could you state your name and address?
Keep your name and email.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
I saw a piece of paper there.
No, you have to say it. Protocol.
Thank you.
Gary Shaheed.
Okay, I've got something to protect you from tomatoes. I'm here to speak as a private citizen, and it's about the height, but it's about some other things that I read in the newspaper and have been reading in the newspaper in the last few days, last few weeks. And I sense there's a growing small minority of anti-growth development that's occurring in the town of...
All in please, Lynn Havens saying.
So I'm not going to be popular here, but I certainly want to voice my opinion. My name is Gary Shaheed. I live at sixteen forty Omni Boulevard, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, and I'm here as a private citizen expressing my opinion. And I'm not here to advocate for anyone. I'm a real estate developer in the town of Mount Pleasant, and I'm the one that's responsible for Bridge Side, where Motley Rice is located. I'm also responsible for the Mobile Home Park, for having relocated the Mobile Home Park on Highway seventeen and building a Harris Teeter and Hobby Lobby shopping center. Forty years ago, Mount Pleasant was a quaint little fishing village that you passed through on the way to the beach. Today, Shem Creek has hotels, restaurants, multimillion-dollar homes, and of course, Red's Ice House.
Thirty seconds, Gary, I've got to rest you.
Okay. Red's Ice House, where people drink and play loud music on a wooden deck forty feet in the air. There are those of us that wanted to return to the way it was. It will not. People are moving to Mount Pleasant in droves. Housing creates an enormous demand for fire, police protection, parks, schools, transportation, infrastructure. Property taxes generated from residences do not come close to paying for all of these services. Businesses, on the other hand, pay the vast amount of taxes to support these services, and they don't use in our...
Thank you, Gary, I'm sorry, you got your two minutes. No tomatoes, though, so...
George Brewer.
George here?
Good evening, George.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Whatever tomatoes are reserved, I'm probably going to receive them.
Well, you'll have your two minutes.
My name is George Brewer. I live on Vine Street here in Mount Pleasant. I haven't...I wasn't born here, but I've been here for over thirty years, and I've seen a lot of growth and change, as Gary has alluded to. Mount Pleasant is no longer the sleepy little village that it was twenty or thirty years ago that we nostalgically think of. It was wonderful then, it's also wonderful now. People want to live here. It's not a question of whether it's going to grow or not, it's a question of how we manage the growth, excuse me, that we're going to have. Because there...and I represent the ownership of Multrie Plaza, I can allay the fears of Mr. Nichols and the other board members, we will not submit anything to try to get into an early deadline to...these things take a long time, and they take a long time to develop. What I don't want to do is eliminate the flexibility that the Planning Department has to consider this. Here's the problem. The problem is our competition, if you will, is no longer Somerville, it's Greenville. And if you go to downtown Greenville, I think you will see non-objectionable properties. Coleman Boulevard is a street of small parcels. You can't sustain a seventy-five-foot parcel there, it'd be completely, totally inappropriate. But on the larger parcels, it could be appropriate, and what you're doing is that you're limiting the opportunity for large-scale, mass-appropriate, designed product in Mount Pleasant. If we may be able to have a restaurant on top that looks at...all I'm saying is that you don't want to eliminate the opportunity to have a designed product that's always going to be under the control of the town.
Thank you, appreciate it, George.
Appreciate it, George.
Okay, that's all we have signed up under two. Any further discussion from council? Any other comments?
I'm sorry. Because I know we're probably heading towards a vote. I do have a couple of questions and comments. As I understand it, prior to two thousand and eight, Crab recommendations being adopted, there was zoning in place for Coleman Boulevard, which...but after Crab was provided for, it provided for fifty-five feet, except for technically four, later to become three properties, two arguably in play, no one's going to bulldoze the Boulevard, so there's two. And then this contiguous deal, which I need to ask a few questions about. What I want to...what I'm wondering is, before two thousand and eight, what was the height that was Mr. Brewer or others who had property could have gone to? Was it forty and increased to fifty-five, except for his? Or could somebody help me?
Actually, from nineteen eighty-two till two thousand and six, the building height on many portions of Coleman Boulevard was fifty feet.
Fifty, okay.
Fifty. Then we adopted Coleman, Ben Sawyer Overlay District, two thousand and six, and that's when the tag was changed to fifty-five feet. And then also, well, there was actually a provision that with that one, when it was changed to fifty-five feet on the front, it was dropped to forty feet on the rear of the properties where they abutted residential areas. Then in two thousand and eight, that is when the Crab recommendations came along, and that was when the four, originally four parcels were considered for seventy-five feet, and ended up only being three. It was during that adoption process to incorporate the seventy-five feet at those three locations that everyone's familiar with, the request was made by the developer, could there be consideration if they were able to, if they were contiguous to one of these seventy-five-foot parcels? And they were able to come up with a development plan that was contiguous and matched with everything else that was on that seventy-five-foot parcel, that seventy-five foot could be extended onto those additional properties? And so that was done in two thousand and eight.
I really appreciate that. I guess my takeaway there is it's been somewhere between forty, fifty, fifty-five, until Crab came along and gave four parcels plus the...or three parcels plus the contiguous seventy-five. No one has actually gone to seventy-five. Boulevard went to plus or minus sixty, kind of depends on how you look at it. And has anyone utilized what I'll call the contiguous option, to our knowledge? Is that...
I'm not aware.
Okay. Does it require the property that's actually zoned, let's say seventy-five, to go seventy-five before the contiguous option? Or can you just say, "Hey, look, that property's...Brewer's property's seventy-five, I know he's not going there, but I'm contiguous to it, I'm making an application."
Well, the way it reads is additional property may be allowed at a maximum of seventy-five feet provided these properties are incorporated and aggregated with those in one of the three locations in which seventy-five foot is allowed.
Is allowed.
And is in a unified development scheme. So I think it anticipates that it would probably be done either together or that it could potentially come after the original seventy-five was done.
But I'm nervous where it says is allowed. It sounds like if it's allowed, even though they didn't do it, they could make application for it. I guess where I'm going with all this, Madam Mayor and members of council, is that, and I think it might have been Mr. Santos, it might have been somebody else who said, "In oh eight, oh seven, oh six, there really wasn't a grand kind of modern example of what a fifty-five, sixty-foot structure looked like." The difference is, we have one now. And I, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, I get that, but in, on Coleman Boulevard, folks I've spoken to, and many are in the room tonight, but many are just from around, really have said to me, not an hour ago when I went to vote, of course, somebody had said the same thing to me, is that they really see, they can't imagine something in greater scope and size than, let's say, the Boulevard. And I'm persuaded by that myself. And I'm also just nervous about, really nervous about the contiguous property within the city block thing. So I support Councilman O'Neill's recommendation. I would...I have no problem with actually, when it comes back, debating whether it should be something with a four or a five or whatever it might be in front of it. But I also want to make sure that it includes the property owner adjacent to the height area option, which we just heard about. Is that included in that by implication, or do we have to do something separate to include?
I think by implication, it speaks directly to the seventy-five feet, so by nature, that would be included in the motion. But if you feel more comfortable with me amending the motion to include that, I will.
Well, and I'm going to offer that as a friendly amendment, to make sure that there is no...you know, it doesn't mean we're doing anything tonight, it means that I want that to come back from the Planning Commission with their recommendation to include that, and I offer that as a friendly amendment.
Well, I will accept your amendment to amend my motion to include not only the seventy-five-foot height, but also the resolution of the...
Wait, just one...
Mr. Nichols, you're making a motion to amend, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that would require a second.
Second.
A vote on the amendment, and then you can vote on the whole package when you're done making amendments.
I'll refer to it as the contiguous argument.
Okay, so we have, on the floor, we have two motions, but we have now the latest motion, is a motion to amend the original motion and a second. Correct?
There's a request to, for clarification, as to exactly what you're moving for.
From...
Ms. Thomasin's just...
Yeah. And what my intention is, Ms. Stokes Marshall, is let's say that it's ultimately the will of council to reduce the seventy-five to a different number, whatever it might be, sixty-five, fifty-five, forty, whatever the number might be, that the adjacent property owners to those three properties now would then only be entitled, I guess, to that side. I'd like to eliminate the whole contiguous property deal altogether.
But that's not, for clarification, that's not your amendment.
But that's not my amendment right now.
Okay.
My amendment right now is to include them in that height reduction.
So we have a motion to amend and a second, Mr. Carrier?
More clarification, please.
Who's second? Who was second on that?
I second it.
Just more clarification. We're still talking about sending it back to the Commission for all of this to be deciphered, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we now have, I will take the vote on the amended motion. All in favor of amending the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? So the ayes to the amendment, Carrie, I think Mr. Smith has a comment?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, the, as we clarified earlier with my point, I'm going to further shed some more light for clarification, because we realize two properties or three properties, it's multiple properties. In our Planning Committee meeting, I was amazed to understand from Ms. Christiane the timeline of the heights. We're focusing on two thousand and six at fifty-five feet, but I think it's important for us to know, as we're making an informed decision, to understand the significant scope of that timeline history. As I understand and have my notes from the Planning Committee, in forty-nine, it was a hundred and fifty feet. So I want to make sure that everybody understands it went from a hundred and fifty feet to a change in nineteen seventy-nine to no limits. And then in nineteen eighty-two, when the comp plan was adopted, it went to seventy-two feet. And we are currently at the, in the Coleman Boulevard Overlay District in two thousand and six, fifty-five feet, and now two thousand and eight with the Crab, we're at seventy-five feet. Ms. Christiane Farrell, do I have my notes accurate, or do I stand to be corrected in any of those, what I would call a heartbeat-like graph regarding the height ordinances over the buildings, since nineteen fifty?
Your information's correct.
And I believe sixty feet in two thousand and six is the same, the metric system hasn't changed. Sixty feet in two thousand and six is still sixty feet in two thousand and fourteen, I do believe. With this, in trying to help me understand how I want to vote on this particular subject, I would ask Chris's, Councilman Chris O'Neill and Chris Nichols, have either one of you or anyone on this council, Madam Mayor, including you, spoken directly with all of the property owners that we are having a discussion about changing their private property, ordinances that would affect their private property owner rights?
Well, Mr. Smith, it's funny that you would ask me that, because I had a meeting with Mr. O'Neill last week with the Chamber of Commerce, and it was my suggestion that it was unfair of this council and me as mayor to keep changing the rules. And I'm very challenged by changing rules. So I can't begin to tell you the number of meetings I have had with individual owners' property. I also recently read this document, which is the Crab. Again, and I think the issue is this, I think y'all pegged it. When Earl's Court was built, we didn't know what twenty-plus units anchor looked like. Like it or not, it's built, or being built, and it's not my cup of tea, I don't want to live there, but it's all sold, and, you know, people are going to be moving in. But that said, this council responded to the citizen voice, citizen-driven government, and reduced the amount of density by increasing setbacks. I think the height issue is subjective. I mean, does it make a difference that it's sixty-five feet or seventy-five feet? Of course, a hundred and fifty feet matters. I think fifty-five feet matters. But my challenge is, is that Ann and Tony Gentile have owned a property on the corner of Fairmont and Coleman for twenty-plus years and have paid property taxes on it, and they have plans to retire on that property. As Mr. Brewer, hopefully, one day someone knocks on his door with a beautiful plan to build a big building on his property. That being said, I have had lots of conversation with individual business owners, I have not had conversations with all. So through this process over the last few weeks, we discussed many issues. We said, "Well, how about we'll call back the Crab? You know, we'll have them all come back in." But they were stakeholders in a different way. We're in a different place today. We have a Planning Commission that does a good job. I'm more than willing to support taking it back to the Planning Commission. Do I like seventy-five feet when I look at sixty-two feet at the Boulevard? No, I don't. But I don't carry the single vote here, and I very much appreciate all the hardworking people who paid their property taxes on Coleman Boulevard, like Chris at Chris's Dry Cleaners, who wants to someday retire, and we keep changing the rules. So I'm okay, I'm listening, and I'm listening, you know, but I think it's time. And then the real challenge is, y'all are only bound by this council and this mayor's term, because perhaps someone else will sit here another term... Because perhaps someone else will sit here another term, and they'll want to go back to a hundred and fifty feet. And we'll be back over here again, because it's only bound by what we do today. So, Thomasina Stokes-Marshall told me something very wise before the meeting. She said, perhaps we need to look twenty years, thirty years, forty years beyond this. We are growing. And, and challenge as it is, prosperity is good. Because you can go to Hemingway and Dillon and Marion and some of the small towns that now have a Family Dollar and a Burger King, and people are leaving. So, we got to balance it. I'm okay with taking it back to the Planning Commission. I'm okay with calling a stakeholders meeting. I'm very open to suggestion. But what I don't want is one side against the other forever. It needs to be fair, and it needs to be decided, and we need to let these people do what they're going to do. Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, I, I agree a hundred percent with, with what you're saying. And, and it, it's wonderful, as you've stated several times, that we have, most recently, had such an engaged community at our committee meetings and council meetings. And I, for one, know that and feel that I sit in this chair, but I represent all people. I represent the Old Village, I represent North Mount Pleasant, I represent individual residents, as well as commercial business owners and developers. Together, with a respectable conversation, with some visionary thought process that is in the best interest of the whole, we won't be an all-American city one time. We'll be an all-American city year after year with state championship sports programs. I, I think that it's important for us to move slowly, as you're indicating. It's important for everyone to have a seat at the table. And that, that would be the spirit that I would hope that we would move in. And I, I would hope that if I were any of the individuals, and I won't call them out, Madam Mayor, with all due respect, as you did, anybody's name, but if.
I'm sorry, I've been here a long time.
Yeah, I understand. But if any one, if any one of you sitting out there, your life goal and dream was to do something with the property that your family owned for generations, or just bought six months ago, you have rights, and we have a responsibility to protect those rights. And I will stand firm and make sure that we're protecting all, all persons' rights. And I think that's what I'm hearing us say, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I've sat here and listened to the comments for and against changing the seventy-five-foot height, it brings back a lot of memories to me as a longer-serving councilman. And much of the history in terms of how we got here, you know, I still kind of remember most of it. Out of all the comments that I've heard, I'm inclined, most of all, to agree with the comments that have been made by my fellow councilman, Mark Smith. And the reason and the rationale for that, as an elected leader of this town, we are charged with making decisions that's not for today, next year, five, but maybe even beyond fifteen, twenty years. Nobody likes change, or very few of us. But the fact is, people love Mount Pleasant, and they're moving here in droves. And as we look at making the decisions that will position the town of Mount Pleasant to maintain itself on the same level in terms of services and taxes and our quality of life, we have to look at the big picture, folks. We're not all going to be pleased and satisfied all of the time. And we do need to work together. We need our residents' inputs, we need the housing industry, we need the developer. And instead of us tugging against each other, I hope and I pray that we can come together collectively and reach a decision that we all can live with. Mark is right when he says, we were not elected to serve any specific area of the town. We were elected to serve all of the town of Mount Pleasant. North, east, south, and west of the town's boundary lines. So, when we are charged with the responsibility of ultimately making the decisions that's going to work to the best of its ability, short, mid, and long term, for all of our residents' folks, I encourage you, you know, let's not fight against each other. Let's fight with each other to find a solution.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes-Marshall.
Are they timing this, Councilman?
I wasn't timing T S M.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call for the vote, if we could, please, ma'am.
No further comment. We have a motion and a second that has now been amended and voted on the amendment. Please call for the vote. Or do we want to state the motion one more time? Yeah.
Do you remember it, Chris?
That's why we have a.
She's going back to you, finally.
Hooked on final.
It's the modified.
These engaged meetings have long minutes. He is moving to send back to the Planning Commission. Reducing the seventy-five-foot height allowance provided for in the Coleman-Ben Sawyer Boulevard section of the urban corridor overlay district. And I believe the amendment was also to include the contiguous properties. That was the amendment, correct. So, everyone fully understands, we'll call the vote, please. Mr. Carrier?
Aye.
Mr. Garch?
No.
Mr. Glasson?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill?
Aye.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
No.
Mayor Page?
Aye.
The ayes, Carrie. Moving right along, item number three is an action item to direct town staff to prepare an ordinance reducing the fifty-five-foot allowance, height allowance on Mill Street to Shem Creek. And Mr. Santos, I will refer to you.
You know, Madam Mayor, after listening to and speaking with some of my fellow councilmembers, I would also like to include this, to go back to the Planning Commission as well for discussion. And so, I'd like to make a motion that we, along with the seventy-five-foot buildings or zoned areas, to also send this back to the Planning Commission as well, for them to review and then send up to, to, I guess, Planning Committee, I guess would be the way to go, and then back to council, or it could come to full council afterwards, whatever. Whatever we're going to do with the seventy-five foot, I'd like to do the same with this.
Do I have a second?
I'll second this.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask somebody who understands the intent of this to explain it to me, so I could understand, whether it's Carrie or anybody else.
I mean, I'd be happy to explain why I've made the motion. I think fifty-five-foot buildings down on Shem Creek is entirely too high. And now, we've had ten other pieces of property around that area that are zoned, that were just rezoned at the same time for fifty-five feet. And I just think that's too high for that area of town. There are certain areas on town, in the town, I think, that it's appropriate. But I certainly don't think it's down at Shem Creek. And I'd like the Planning Commission to take a look at it. I'd like for them to have a public, a public hearing, where the public has an opportunity to come in and discuss it, and give their opinion, and then send it up to full council for their review and ultimate vote.
Mr. Garch?
Are you requesting a separate public hearing? Or the public hearing be a part of the Planning Commission's meeting?
It could be a part of the Planning Commission's meeting as well, along with the seventy-five feet, if they choose to do that. I'll leave it to the Planning Commission to make that decision, whether they want to do it independently or along with the seventy-five feet. I think it basically goes hand-in-hand with the size of the building zone Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Mr. Smith?
Just, Councilman Santos, is there a number that you're thinking? Or you want to let the committee, like the other one, let the committee decide? Is there a number that's in your head?
Just like, yeah, and I'd like the committee to take a look at it and make a recommendation. I don't want to tie their hands or bind their hands to expect a certain height. I think they ought to be able to look at it and come up to a decision and send it up to us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Garch?
Folks, we've got a great Planning Commission that we appoint. They're all volunteers, and they, they do it because they care deeply about this town. There's no doubt about that. But I'm wondering, what is it that we're doing? What expertise does this body have? How are they going to arrive at making a decision? What are they, what are they going to do? What are y'all thinking about that? These folks are used to getting presentations or projects presented to them, whether it meets setbacks, heights, lighting, vegetation, buffers, drainage, those types of things. And this one's coming to them, and after six, seven years' worth of a process of work, whether you agree with it or not, six, seven years with planning professionals and staff, and of course, people that own their property. And we're sending this back to a great group of people, again, volunteers, reappointed, that sit on a Planning Commission. I just try to figure out where we're going with that. So, we send it to them, and they talk about it, and whatever rationale they're going to try to use to come up with, and they come up with a number, and then it comes back to the Planning Commission.
I just like.
Seems like a lot, you know, seems like we ought to do more to honor the process, right? Just spend a lot of time, again, whether you don't like this part of it, or you don't like that part of it, that, that's fine. And that's why, when you started talking about Coleman Boulevard being your main street in nineteen ninety-two, and it bumped along, and then it really picked up speed in two thousand and two. And as the process evolved, we got it away from the elected officials, we got it, we appointed, Mayor Harry Holman appointed a committee of crab, purposely brought in the stakeholders, the people that own property on the street, rightfully so. Several citizens were involved in it. You know, Mayor Page, I heard you mention reconvening the crab. And it doesn't have to be the membership before. I think it's a great idea to, to reconvene those folks. Several citizens now that are involved, that want to serve on it and be a part of it. And if we need to bring in an outside, independent planning professional to work along with them to help us arrive at it, why don't we do it? Well, I don't understand. We're sending this back, though, to our Planning Commission. I'm trying to think if I'm a Planning Commission, it comes to me. Well, now, you know, I've looked at this, and I've looked at that, and I think it should be this. Well, you know, I don't like fifty-five, but I, I'll do this. I think we should really, really give a lot of thought about honoring the process. Everything that we've done well in this town has always had a detailed and thorough process.
Paul, I really appreciate your comments, and I put a lot of thought into that. And the challenge is this. The one piece of property from Mill to Shem Creek is the piece of property that now is at fifty-five feet, is the one that we have now an application for a office building on. And for clarification, that piece of property has a lease line, not a lot line. And I think there was some confusion about the difference between a lease line and a lot line. So, one part of it is a fifty-five-foot, because of the flood zone and a, and a project. And the other, all the other property from Mill to Shem Creek is forty feet, because it's in the Shem Creek overlay district. So, perhaps you're right. The problem is, who is that person? I don't know that it's a crab. I don't know that it's a citizen's. Perhaps it's the College of Charleston. I'm not a fan of consultants. I think it can be citizen-led, with developer input and, and stakeholder input. But, you know, Paul, guide me, because I'm very challenged to how to bring that together. When, when I read this document, this is not the issue. We don't want to, I trust the process. I voted against the urban corridor, in case you didn't know. But I, but I got outvoted. And once I got outvoted, then you have to take the product, and you have to say, we got to make it as good as we can make it. So, I do trust the process, and I do know it's coming, and growth is coming. And I do want to do it right, because we're only going to get a chance to do it one time. At least, I'm only going to get a chance to do it right one time. So, you know, if you would allow me some time or latitude, perhaps before next month, I could come up with some suggestions about what that would look like. Or perhaps you could help me tonight?
No, that's what I'm doing right now. I'm putting it out there for us to think about. I don't, I don't have the golden key. I just tell you, I know that fortunately, for all the years I've served, when we looked at things, you know, we said, man, we've got to come up with a process to do this. You know, we, none of us are planners. When, when Ms. Farrell and those folks come to us, and they start talking to us about these new things and planning, we're like, we're like anybody else. You know, what in the heck, how, you know, all those types of things. Because you don't, we don't know what it's going to look like. We, we know this. You and I grew up here, and this darn town is even better than it was when we grew up here. Even with all the people that are here. So, I mean, again, it's just, like I said, I'm just putting it out there, let's honor this process.
I understand, I understand.
Think about, think about our Planning Commission that we're sending us back to.
The challenge I had are, is separation. We have road design. You know, we've, we've fought right away. And I don't mind the process that you're too far in. My brother Tony would have called that the sunk cost trap, that you were too far into a project. I think you can throw a project out, but that's not what this is, this conversation is about. You know, we have a road design. I think we like, I think that beautification is okay. You know, plants and bushes, and better lighting, and crosswalks, and safety, and wide activity zones. I think we're all okay with that. So, we have a road design, it's okay. That's a big part of the crab. It seems like the two issues that we continue to rub over is density and height. So, I don't know that, that this document, which goes much, much further, and talks about many more things than density and height. So, that's the problem. I think we need to get to density and height, I think we need to move on. So, I'd be glad to have a committee, if you'd like to help me, but maybe a few of us can get together and figure out what we look like, I don't know.
Love, love to help you. And density will be going on and on and on and churning long after we're gone. You know, when I, when I first came on this council, there's a beautiful piece of property on Mathis Ferry that developers were going to kill each other to get. And the Graham family did their, did a great job with the Jordan family, and the Jordan family said, I want to sell it to you. And they came up with this concept called neo-traditional neighborhood. And I said, what is that? Well, I looked at all of that, and I said, and I, I got to understand, and I said, you know what? We've got seventeen different cookie-cutter neighborhoods in this town, but we don't have anything like this. I cannot live here, myself. You know, and people are knocking the door down to get in there. But density, it's, you know, it's density. And we're surrounded on three sides by water, into the north by National Forest. And we can't keep saying that's going, that's going to go there, or that's going to go there. Like Ms. Stokes-Marshall said, we've got to face the music and, and prepare for the future, because it's not about us. You know, I have the wonderful benefit of my eighty-five-year-old father and having a twenty-two-year-old son, because my dad, as you know him well, he doesn't want another thing to come to this town. And he lets me know every day. And I, I hear him loud and clear, as soon as I walk in the door. What in the hell are you doing now, son? And it's good to see you too, Dad, and turn off Fox News and take a break. But, but same time, here's my son, who just graduated South Carolina, and he's going to dental school. You know where he wants to come and be a dentist?
Mount Pleasant.
Right here. And you know what? He's got friends that just graduated and have jobs, they just moved into the Boulevard. And it's just watching all that stuff, because we all get caught up in what we want, when we got to think about what's coming. So, I'm just saying, my point is, as I'm rambling here, and I didn't want to make any speeches, that I just really think that we, we should do a better job to honor the process. And I don't care how long it takes, you know. care how long it takes, you know, and we're not always all going to agree. And you might find out quickly that those people, George here tonight, but those people that own those properties, they might say, you know what? Sixty feet is fine for them. But, so however I can help you, but I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Linda.
I think Mr. Smith was first, Gary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of thoughts, you know, I think all great, good points, great points. I want to make sure that, I know not everyone of the council members was able to attend the planning committee meeting when staff, Chrissiane specifically, gave that timeline. I want to make sure that all of you are aware that, you know, we talked about forty-foot heights on Shim Creek. We touched in on about Shim Creek forty feet, fifty-five feet off the creek, seventy-five feet at a couple spots along Coleman Boulevard. Here's the next thing, guys, it goes up to eighty feet on Chuck Dolly and Johnny Dodds. So if we, do we want to have that conversation now as well? Because eighty feet's pretty high, too. If we've got a problem with seventy-five, do we got a problem with eighty? And I'm just simply bringing that up to shed some light, to make sure that as we make decisions, because I guarantee you the person who lives, owns property at Johnny, at Chuck Dolly is just as proud of his property or her property as the person who owns property on Coleman Boulevard and may have the same future goals and plans for their property to cash out at some point, which they have every right to do. So let's make sure that we're having a holistic, realistic, all-encompassing conversation at the same time in the spirit of what Councilman Santos is bringing to us as well as Chris Nichols and Chris O'Neill. It's across the board.
I understand that. We have to do-
And just one final thought. And I disagree with all due respect, Madam Mayor, that we have one shot to get this right. Because as I count here on this timeline, it appears as though we've had seven to eight shots to get this right.
I was talking about after projects build. But to be clear, the properties that front Shim Creek are taller than forty feet by majority. So if we were faced with a devastating fire or hurricane, Shim Creek would disappear and couldn't even be built as tall as it is, just to throw that out there.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Santos was next.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to point a clarification on all this. These properties that were zoned, the ten properties that were rezoned fifty-five feet, was only done six months ago. They weren't there all along, all this time that you're making it sound like. It was done six months ago and the reason it was done is because you couldn't spot zone one piece of property. They had to zone other properties or else it would have been against the law and we could have been sued. So that's the only reason why they were raised to fifty-five feet, Mark. It's not because of any special reason other than it would have been spot zoning if we had only done it for the office building slash parking garage. And so that's some of the facts. You know, it's not that we're trying to take anybody's property or anything. It wasn't done for any other reason than to, you know, avoid spot zoning. So secondly, I want to say something else.
Before you launch a second, Paul, just go ahead.
Hang on, I'm going to do that.
I keep hearing about density and density is a real thing. We have managed, and I've said this before here, we have managed to put traffic common devices on Mathis Ferry Road, Johnny Dodds Boulevard when they went to five lanes on the northern end of it, and now we have it on Coleman Boulevard with medians and stoplights and things like that. They're building homes like crazy in the northern part of town. Thousands of dwelling units are permitted to be built. We can't stop it. We've got to be able to move traffic through Mount Pleasant. And if we continue to put density, high-density areas on these areas here, we're not going to be able to move the traffic ten years from now. The council that's sitting here is going to be wondering what in the world we were thinking by packing all this density into an area and now all of our roads are clogged. I mean, already right now, if you go out there, you can see how backed up, look at the Arthur Rabinell Bridge between four-thirty and five-thirty and see that, how the traffic's backed all the way up. We just opened this road not long ago and we already having traffic issues. If we continue to put density on Coleman Boulevard, it's going to continue to back up there and we're going to be stuck in a big mess here. And, you know, we spent all this money to widen Johnny Dodds and it's already backing up on it. So when we keep talking about density in this area here, if we keep continuing to put density there, it's going to get worse and worse and the quality of life for our citizens living here is going to be zero, in my opinion.
Good order, please. Yes, sir, Mr. Nichols.
Okay, a couple of comments. And I appreciate what the councilman pointed out about property rights and surveying the owners on Johnny Dodds and Chuck Dolly, but one of the major differences is that nobody from out of the area has ever said, honey, I'm going to take you to Mount Pleasant and I'm going to show you Johnny Dodds Boulevard. Or I'm going to take you from out of Mount, we're going to come visit Mount Pleasant and I want to show you Chuck Dolly. Shim Creek in that corridor is incredibly special and we all recognize it. And I don't want any of that. What I want to say is that it is unique and it deserves special attention. And you know what? Once in a while, special rules might have to apply for special places. And I've come to appreciate that again. I can't imagine that, you know, fifty-five feet, forty-five feet, these are large, those are large buildings. A lot can be accomplished in that kind of height and square footage. And I would like to apply principles across the board without exceptions. I'm, you know, I'm an attorney. I live in a world of exceptions because there's always a general rule and then I have to deal with exceptions. But the exceptions have to come rarely and with good reason and for a special reason. And I think that the case could be made that Coleman Boulevard in this area, and it's not that large, qualifies for special attention and therefore special rules. And so no, the answer is, I didn't go to each property owner and ask them what their specific thought was about, you know, forty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five. Nor do I doubt that anyone went to each property owner and said, by the way, you know that property that's only been twenty feet forever, we're going to increase that to seventy-five for you, you know? We did that with the hope that there would be redevelopment, sort of density bonuses and all that. I remind everybody that there's been, this has been around since oh-eight, that some very handsome and really neat things can occur if people decide to redevelop, even at some of the suggested heights that have been put out there today. But I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. I believe, yes, sir, Mr. Garch? How are you?
Good. My mic starts a little dry on this, but I've been able to get a word in here. Just if I could, Madam Mayor, I appreciate it. There's some merit in what everyone is saying, particularly what Councilman Garch had mentioned. It's not so much that it's a lack of consideration of adjusting a plan that we did take seven years to put in place, it's the process in which we would go back and do that. And the unintended consequences, which we're already seeing with one adjustment that we made, it was a quick back to the planning commission and another quick vote and the popularity we had to adjust because the residents were speaking out. But when you draw back and look at that, now that's got a developer that has issues on his project that affect other, before we do that, that knee-jerk reaction, I think the intent is, do we want to revisit Coleman Boulevard? And do we want to, especially Mr. Nichols is right, I mean, you know, no one goes out and let's say, take you down Highway seventeen to look at the wonderful lights, oh, it was beautiful. However, the process in which we do it, we either knee-jerk reaction and then what are the unexpected consequences that we don't see? You know, there was a big, let's go after Earl's Court, well, he's building something, we don't like it, how do you, and in the end, let's dial back and let's take a look at the plan and if it needs to be adjusted, adjust it properly. Stop making a big stage about, we can adjust this and pick that and put, and I think we kick ourselves in the butt every time we do that when the residents have spoken and I think we need to take a deep breath, dial back and maybe look at the crab as an overall view of where it is and where do we envision it going to? Because I know just in the last ten and fifteen years from developers that I know, I mean, my father's a retired builder, but just the process, when you say fifty-five to forty-five to thirty-five, what does that mean? The difference in the technology that goes into the rafters that reduces the qualifications of a room heater, of the necessities to make that a standard building? And we, I know I don't have the expertise to do that. So going back and addressing those professionals and taking a step back and looking at it overall. And I think that there's some sentiment all across the board, it's just the process in which I think we're breaking right now. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith? And then I'm going to be ready for the audience.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope that as we continue to have discussions about the vision of Mount Pleasant, the bigger picture that I hear Councilman Garch talk about and you talking about earlier, that when we look down on our community, that A, we're not in the business of ever picking winners and losers. We're never saying one neighborhood is more special than another neighborhood. That when we look down on this community from forty thousand feet, that it doesn't look like a white sheet, it looks like a quilt. And we interwool all of the unique cultures, heritage and rich traditions that represent our community. I hear all the time in many of the emails that were sent, we don't want to look like Rocky Hill. We don't want to look, you know, we know what we don't want to look like, but there's very few saying what we do want to look like. So if we could maybe have that conversation to lead us in some direction in a unified community, that's exciting visionary leadership that I look forward to us having.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Garch?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make it known, I'm not going to support this item, this motion on the height like I didn't support the seventy-five feet. I'm not, I'm voting against it, not because of the height or the issue of that. Again, I can get to the height where we've gone through, vetted the public process and sending it to a committee that we appoint, of volunteers that worked their tails off, is not what we are elected to do, in my most humble opinion. So I'm not going to support this for that. It's not about the height. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carey.
I served on the crab. And I see one other person out here that served on the crab with me. Is there more than one out there? We spent an awful lot of time on this and we delved into everything. We had urban planners, we had landscape architects, we had people who knew what they were doing and knew what we wanted. And then we had a council that we sold it to and they bought in a hundred percent. And I'm listening to all this from people that never went through this process and most of the public didn't go through the process. We certainly gave them opportunity, we gave them thirty or more charades, we gave them more public input opportunities than you could ever imagine. And did they show up? No. Just like the other night, we had a comprehensive plan meeting at two different locations. You know how many people showed up for that? That's a ten-year process that only gets looked at every five years. We had a hundred and fifty people show up for that. Now, I'm sorry, folks, but this thing has been vetted a lot. And I'm telling you what, if you didn't participate, shame on you. And for what we're doing here tonight, I'm not all hung up on seventy-five foot. I think that is negotiable. But the rest of it had better hopefully stay because that's what we were dreaming about. And Mount Pleasant, it needs it. We've got to have it. We've got, all due respects to Councilman Santos, your density is traffic problems. They're going to solve traffic problems. And if he hasn't participated in the process, so he doesn't understand the urban planners. He doesn't understand. And some of you don't understand. And it's a case of preventing sprawl, it's a case of preventing your tax dollars being spent frivolously for people living who knows where, as far as they can go. And it's got to stop. I mean, we've got people coming here, by 2040, we're going to have a hundred thousand people here. Twenty forty, that's not very far from here. A hundred thousand people. Now you think, how are we going to service all that? You think we're going to service it by services way out in the hinterland? I don't think so. We'll just hope, at least ten thousand of those folks are within five miles of the center of Mount Pleasant. But I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it is aggravating to think that a process like the crab is being thrown asunder by so many council people that never, ever have even, some of them have never read the document, never read the final document. And probably some of you haven't either. So I challenge you, go read the documents because it's a great document. It had a lot of professional input and it means something to this town. And maybe we will, some of us individually will not get kudos for it and we don't want kudos, but in the future, you'll look back and say, boy, that they do a great job. And I challenge you to do that, so.
I'm going to ask you to hold your comment. Is there anyone that signed up, would like to speak now or would you like to hold it until after issue four? We have several people signed up.
Mr. Small. My name is Tex Small, I live at twenty-three oh-six Palm Boulevard, Isle of Palm. I'm here tonight because of three and four. I think if you look at it, our property, our project, our proposal, our work with the town has become the poster child for what you talk about, Mayor, changing it every single month. Every month, the last three months, we've had one councilman over there that brings up another proposal to council because he can get it on the agenda, so he can put it. I'll say that item number three and item number four are specifically targeted at only one property. We talk about spot zoning, a place at the table, you know, openness and all of these things. But I have to leave every second Tuesday and come down here and defend my property rights, Councilman Smith, the ones that I started with, the ones that we developed this project on, I have to defend them so I won't lose the project again, three times in a row. My suggestion to council, you got the wrong rules for council. You can't let one councilman hijack you. You need to have more votes to get something on the agenda. And that's my thoughts and I'd like to speak later about the planning commission, how the DRB proposed.
Thank you.
Gray Taylor?
Members of council, Madam Mayor, my name's Gray Taylor and I'm here both as an attorney for the Shim Creek Development Group, secondly, as an owner of commercial property on Coleman Boulevard, and thirdly, as a resident living on Pelsor Drive. Nearly every summer weekend as well as during special events, Pelsor Drive serves as overflow parking for the thriving Shim Creek Commercial District. The actions proposed by new business items one through four, even though one was tabled, are at best ill-conceived, illegal spot zoning actions. They're designed to kill a specific project which could otherwise be built by right. Seen in the worst light, these four proposed actions represent an intentional, deliberate effort by the town to breach a contract entered in two thousand thirteen. I don't think that's your intent. As I've stated before and you heard here tonight, the town spent ten years and hundreds of thousands of dollars developing a plan for the renewal of Coleman Boulevard. Residents and business community had years of opportunity for public input. The business community supported the plan and invested millions of dollars into property along Coleman Boulevard and by all accounts, the plan is succeeding. A small group now seeks to undo ten years of planning and research in a matter of weeks. Councilman Santos is adamant that each week he will bring up a new way of attacking specific projects. Due to a lack of study or perhaps by design, his first round of attacks also significantly impacted several planned commercial projects. The contiguous property arguments that we heard here tonight are another example of expansive regulation under the guise of an emotional argument and a knee-jerk reaction. If ultimately passed, the four items before you tonight are likely to result in years of litigation. A commercial office building will still replace the dirt parking lot on Mill Street, but without the parking deck. Businesses will continue to suffer and the patrons of the Shim Creek bars will continue to park on Pelsor Drive. Please, stand up for the good of the town. Do not succumb to the demands of a few. Please, stand up for the good of the town. Do not succumb to the demands of a few. Hear the voices of the entire community. The Planning Commission is not the appropriate group to make long-term planning decisions for this town. As you heard tonight, the business community is now taking note of the continual, repeated changes to zoning and impact on their property rights.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Andy Gauder?
Mayor, members of council, my name is Andy Gauder. I am a partner in the law firm Pratt, Thomas, Walker, and I represent Shem Creek Development Group, along with Gray Taylor. Nearly a year ago, the town manager asked the town attorney to work with Mr. Taylor and need to craft an agreement for a shared parking arrangement between the town and Shem Creek Development Group. And we did that. And this council got it, and this council considered it. And on recommendation of the administration and the town attorney, this town adopted that agreement. Several months ago, however, the landscape began to shift under my client's feet, and the town began changing the zoning and regulatory characteristics on which my client based its investment-backed expectations. This council changed setbacks, which inadvertently, I think, changed the size and design of the building planned by my client on this location. When that problem became clear, though, rather than working to correct the obvious unintended harm to this project, town council and administration have not acted decisively to affirm this contract that had just ended in October, and rather have allowed those who oppose any building in this area to use the opportunity to attempt to repudiate the agreement with my client that had been reached just three, or just several months earlier in October. And now we're faced with three action items tonight directed at my client, this property owner, that have passed would violate the agreement that the town entered with my client, would ignore their vested rights, and could amount to taking of my client's property. I respectfully ask you not to proceed to dismantle this agreement that was reached last October with my client under the zoning laws that then existed. To do otherwise would not only harm this property owner, but it would discourage other property owners and businesses from investing in this town if they believe that the town's promises cannot be relied upon.
Jimmy Bagwell?
I am not going to speak, again, I'm Jimmy Bagwell, two oh seven Williams Street. I'm not going to speak about the technicalities of the plan on Mill Street and Coleman Boulevard. But I am going to speak about the desirability of that type of building in that area. You talked about your members of your planning board. Well, one of our former mayors, Cheryl Woods Flowers, just wrote a very, very fine letter to the Post and Courier about development on Shem Creek and about this particular project. I think that Shem Creek, as Mr. Nichols pointed out, is a very, very special area. There's no replacing it. Once it is gone, it's going to be gone. And I think that we have to have special rules, as Mr. Nichols pointed out, for a very, very special area. This is an area that is very dear to the hearts of all of us who live in the town, whether we've been here for sixty-five years or for five years. People all over this community, not just in Mount Pleasant, are looking at this council to preserve an area that is dear to all of them. People come from all over the Charleston area, from all over the state of South Carolina, from all over the country to partake in the environment at Shem Creek. Let's don't ruin it, ladies and gentlemen. Let's take a hard look at this. Let's let the people have their input on it. Do not be afraid to listen to the voice of the people. That's all I've got, so, thank you.
Jimmy, if you don't mind, appreciate your passionate speeches. And the one thing you say about it's going to go away, Shem Creek, we're going to ruin it. I want to remind you that to date, we committed ten point, ten point three million dollars to Shem Creek to preserve it forever. Six million for the land and the docks, two million to fix them for that park. Two point five is committed to Phase Two, which we're getting ready to start in July. And three hundred thousand dollars, we just dredged Shem Creek. All public money, all because we all realize what a gem it is, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure it's here forever. I want to make sure you understand that.
Okay, I understand it. But my point is, we spent all that money to preserve that side of the creek. Let's spend some money to preserve the other side of the creek.
Jimmy, that's exactly what we're doing. When I sat on this council with Ms. Stokes-Marshall years ago with Mr. Santos, and that situation came before us, and what we should do about the property because somebody was going to develop this, they were going to do that, and it got to be six million dollars. And it's the closest I've ever let something get personal to me in all my decisions here. You know, it's interesting, you appreciate the story. As I was wrenching my hands over what we should do, the right thing, I was in my truck, and I was in the old village, and my truck stopped, and to my right was Alhambra Hall. And I got it. And I said, we're going to do everything we can. And that, when we sat there and we came up, we said, we've got to come up with a Phase One, Phase Two, and a Phase Three. Phase Two is on that other side. But it's the ultimate goal, Jimmy, for anybody that comes to Shem Creek to be able to get, unfortunately, we still have to rely on cars. Hopefully, in 2040, there'll be something else we can rely on. But the goal is, and the vision, is to be able to come to there, park your car in a facility, in a place, and then be able to walk anywhere you want on either side of Shem Creek safely. By even having an attachment to the bridge, if it could be done. All those things were discussed even in 2002, 2003, because we knew we had to have a plan, a phased plan, to use that much public money. So I hear you loud and clear. I just don't want it to be continually conveyed out there that we're going to ruin Shem Creek forever. It's just not the case.
Paul, I commend this council and this town for having preserved that side of Shem Creek like they did. All I'm saying is, let's don't ruin the other side of the creek. Let's bring it into compliance like the other side.
Again, my point is, though, is when you make your comments, you always talk about how we've got to do something or we're going to lose Shem Creek forever. That's just not true, Jimmy.
Well, if we're not careful, Paul, we could.
Jimmy, you served on town council. Do you remember making any motions about anything to do with Shem Creek when you served on town council?
Paul, I'm sure I did. You think I can remember twenty-five, thirty years?
I don't remember. I'm just asking.
I'm sure I did. I'm sure I'd made some decisions concerning Shem Creek. I might have even made some incorrect decisions, but times change. And you know, we talk about, nobody has guaranteed anybody anything. You know, zoning is something that we have adopted in this country years ago, and things are not static. Things change. A plan changes. We look at a comprehensive plan every five years. Well, let's look at the Crab. It's been five, or six, or seven years. The Crab is not perfect, Mr. Carrier. It has flaws, too.
Thank you, Mr. Bagwell.
Okay, that's all.
Charles Dickinson?
Charles?
Jim Owens?
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Jim Owens. I live at eleven ninety-seven Island View Drive. There's been an awful lot of valuable information. Documents, the Crab, the Coleman Boulevard Revitalization Master Plan, the 2002 Preservation of Shem Creek. There's a number of documents out there. Some are flawed, some are perfect. Is there really any that are perfect? So we have to mitigate between all of those to try to come up with something that's respectful of both the developers, business owners, and our residents. As a whole, in residential community, we want to maintain a small, eclectic feel. People are moving into Mount Pleasant because of the way it looks today. Now, what is it going to look like in twenty years from now? They don't know what it looks like in twenty years from now. They're moving here because of what it looks like today. And according, in accordance with the Crab, with the Revitalization Master Plan, 2002 document to preserve Shem Creek, Mayor Holman sought to make sure that we were a small community. We were going to maintain an eclectic feel, something that would draw people to this area. He knew that development was going to approach Shem Creek in a reasonable fashion. And he outlined those abilities to do that. He wanted to make sure that it was preserved and protected, to make sure that there was a small, small buildings. There were no large-scale buildings in that area. This would be the first one. And the example, as far as the fifty-five-foot structures. I think with the, I think that there's a lot of value with everybody that's spoken here today in that we can take and make a standard. We can have more of a standard as far as a relative height of building. A good example is by Mr. Smalls. Those elevations and heights at that location were forty-five feet. He got a variance to go to fifty-five feet. Those are available throughout Mount Pleasant, all of Coleman Boulevard. But maintain something small, something that the citizens can, and business owners can both respect jointly.
Thank you, Chair.
Nancy Ferris?
I'm going to refrain from speaking. It's all we've said, mostly by the throne.
Okay, that's all we have signed up to speak on this issue. I asked Mr. Santos to defer his comments till after the public.
I just have a brief statement. Mr. Carrier indicated that his time on Crab, that he wasn't sure if some council members had read the report, and that it was unanimous decision to approve it. It wasn't. It was an eight-to-one vote. I read the document. I voted against it because of the seventy-five-foot heights on the buildings. So I just wanted to clarify it after the record.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you. And I want to thank very good citizens who spoke. I am a bit concerned, and I need some clarity. Perhaps this is for you, Mr. Pagliarini. Sorry. Several of the citizen lawyers who spoke indicated that what are now what we call New Business Items Two, Three, and Four, one's been scrubbed appropriately, that they were directed or indirectly could affect the project that Mr. Smalls has spoken about. I think we've already given him a taste of that. I think, or at least in my case, I can't speak for the whole council. I had no idea, frankly, when the setbacks thing, which I think passed unanimously, by the way, on this council, affected that project. But specifically, Act, Item Number Two, which I think we've already voted on, there was a close vote. I'm not sure I appreciate how asking the commission to take a look at the seventy-five feet and perhaps going to something less than that would affect the project down at Shem Creek that we've been talking about. But is there something in Items Three and Four legally which, if this council decided to vote yes to, whether it's the zoning districts and/or the, going to the forty feet, would affect the project of a man who's already submitted his plan according to the laws and ordinances and regulations, everything else that are in place, hopefully so in two weeks? I don't, I'm not going to, I can't support that, and would not support that if I did that to Mr. Smalls again. So can you explain what the lawyers, these other lawyers were talking about?
Mr. Nichols, I, you know, their position is what they explained. I'll tell you from a procedural standpoint, what is proposed as to Number Three, as I understand the motion, is to send something for planning commission review, and therefore, this council is not undertaking any final votes tonight. If that, if there are no final votes on anything, I can't see how that would affect anything. But obviously, I'm assuming we don't know what's going to happen yet.
On Number Three, the fifty-five-foot height allowance, I know Mr. Santos put that on there. Is that specifically referring to the properties that were also included in the zoning that took place when it went, in addition to the Mill Street zone? Is that what's going? And basically returning them to where they were, if you will, before it was increased? Is that?
That is a planning director.
Section forty-five.
Okay, they were at forty?
It was forty once upon a time, and then it became forty-five, and then finally fifty-five. So there's ten properties that front.
And just, I need to know this, because I don't know how that got accomplished. Did they get a letter in the mail one day saying, congratulations, zoning has been increased to fifty-five feet? Or did we call them in, or?
No, that was this past year. It was, there was a request submitted. We've increased the height to eighty-five feet.
But did we have an individual conversation with those property owners, and we bring them in? No?
But it's gone, but otherwise, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Come here.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and lots of discussion on Item Number Three under New Business. And I believe it's time to call for the vote, and I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Restate the motion.
The motion, as I understand it, is to send, send back to the Planning Commission to reduce the fifty-five-foot height allowance to forty-five feet from Mill Street to Shem Creek and Coleman, Ben Soria Boulevard section of the urban corridor?
Forty.
I'm sorry, to forty feet, excuse me. Fifty-five height allowance to forty feet.
And for clarification, they had forty-five feet, and now you're asking for forty feet?
I'm good with forty-five feet, Mayor. I would rather say forty-five feet. I'm good.
Okay, so you're amending your motion?
Yes.
And who made the second?
I second it.
And you also amend your second?
I do. I feel like I'm in an auction, you know, Mayor.
You should, yeah, auction would go a lot faster than that. I'm sorry. I call for the vote. Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Garch?
No.
Mr. Glasson?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
No.
Mr. O'Neil?
No.
Mr. Santos?
Hi.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
No.
Mayor Page? No. Moving on, Item Number Four is an action item to authorize staff to review and provide rezoning and map amended options in order to remove multiple zoning districts on parcel five forty-seven one five zero 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 one. And I will again ask Gary, you put this on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to defer this since the developer has later today apparently filed his documents for his, the office park, parking garage. We had not had a submittal when I had put this on there, and apparently do now. So I'd like to defer it until such time as that issue has been taken up and decided.
Okay.
If that's okay.
So that's a motion to defer?
Yes.
And second?
Second?
Second to defer. Yes, comment?
Just clarification on why, what was the purpose of the motion to start with?
Purpose of the motion was, at one time, that was in the Shem Creek Overlay District, and it was changed, that one parcel, there was one parcel, it went from Metraler all the way to the street. It was changed. And so you had two, that one piece of property was in two separate overlay districts. One being the Coleman Boulevard Overlay District, one being in the Shem Creek Overlay District. It was changed so that part of it, which includes the office space parking garage, was put into the Coleman Boulevard Overlay District, was removed from the Shem Creek Overlay District. And the intent was, if the plans were not filed, that we would put that back into the Shem Creek Overlay District. Now that the plans have been filed, I'd like to defer it. And if for some reason something happens with the plans, then we would certainly like to include that back into the Shem Creek Overlay District because they're a little bit tighter with the, stringent with the rules, so. But since he's filed this plan, I'm ready to defer, and then we can, we can take it up, you know, later on.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to defer and a second. Any further discussion?
Call a question.
All in favor?
No.
Bye.
No.
So. Mr. Glasson, about now? And Ms. Stokes-Marshall, Mr. Smith. Am I correct? Got the right count? I appreciate all the input on this and the citizens that have come out today. I'll continue to have a conversation, perhaps within the next few weeks, we can find a better solution than the Planning Commission to review issues like this. I don't think we have that today. I just want it to be settled. You know, it's hard to change, it's hard to keep changing the game in the middle of a play. So, there we go. So, yes?
Can I ask a question? In sending this item to the Planning Commissioners and putting the burden and responsibility of them coming up with the recommendation, many of those Planning Commissioners were not involved in the process of Crab whatsoever. What do we expect them to do, or what kind of decision do we expect them to make where some of them may not even have the some of them may not even have the information, or have been engaged in the process, or understand the rationale why that CRAB that meant over a number of years came up with these kind of recommendations? What are the planning commissioners gonna have that the members that served and were involved with CRAB, with all of the experts and everything? What are they gonna have?
Well, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, if you would prefer, I would be glad to call a committee, a CRAB committee. It won't be this CRAB committee. There are different players, different stakeholders, and citizens want to be involved. And if I would have support from this council to call a new CRAB committee, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I think that would make a lot more sense than sending it to the planning commissioners, all right? And it would also provide an opportunity, everyone who has, whether they're in opposition or whether they're in favor of it, to come to the table to have a meeting of the mind.
Yes, ma'am.
And you'll have the experts involved, maybe some of them that weren't involved before, that can provide the reasoning and the rationale as to how we got to where we are now. And if there are the opportunities and the potential to make adjustments and changes.
So are you making a motion and I form a new CRAB?
I'll make a motion that we establish another CRAB.
Yes, clarification.
Just one minute, I just want to clarify. There are four items that have just been addressed. Item number two was approved, and that motion was to send to the planning commission consideration for the reduction of the height allowance regarding the seventy-five feet. Item number three failed. Item number four was deferred. So at this point, I just want to clarify, there's only one.
And that's my reason for putting the point out there, is because right now, when we look at all these four items that's under the business, and where we are, we're all over the place. And at some point in time, we need to have a meeting of the mind.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes-Marshall. Mr. Garge, did you have a comment? I can tell you.
No, I was just gonna say that you can't undo what we just did, but Mr. Pagliarini's being nice to point it out. It's a five-to-four vote to send.
It's the planning commission.
Send it to the planning commission. These folks that we appoint, they volunteer.
Mr. Santos, you have a comment?
Madam Mayor, I just, I would just like to say, I think our planning commission are well-educated people, Ms. Stokes-Marshall. I think they constantly look at issues that have never been before them before. They make logical decisions, educated decisions on it. They hold public hearings where people can come, express their views. I don't sell them short. I don't think, I don't think this is degrading them by sending it to them. I don't. I think they can do an excellent job. They do an excellent job every month, and we listen to their comments, and we take their comments and vote them up or down. So I have no problem going to the planning commission, absolutely none. I think they're a group of professionals, and I got a lot of respect for them.
And I have respect also.
No one's questioning that.
If you send it to a CRAB, or if you even establish a new CRAB, at least you provide an opportunity for all of the stakeholders to be engaged.
Yes, sir, Mr. Nichols?
Couple things. One, this was a narrow request sent to the planning commission, which I was told by our town attorney, this was gonna have to go to the planning commission regardless, either with a specific number from today, or with kind of a more general touchy-feely type deal. We went with the general touchy-feely type deal. We're not asking them to take a look at, we're asking them to address the two properties, or the three properties, including the contiguous element, at which case they'll make a recommendation, and it'll come back up here. And I feel like we have been well-educated over the last months about whether that's something that we're gonna end up having an appetite for or not collectively. So I have no problem with that. And the other sense is, and I think this is important, commissions and committees, they take time, sometimes a long time, just for, and then there's the politics of who's on the commission, or who's on the committee. The planning commission has been, I think there's a wide swath of talent on there. I think they'll take this on. I believe that folks will be able to come and sit in on those meetings. There will be an opportunity for a public comment section, and we'll see this again in a matter of weeks, as opposed to months and months and months. I don't share the same concern on can we, as a council, get to a point where we acknowledge seventy-five feet, twenty-five percent larger than the Boulevard, just maybe at the time it turns out was sort of an over, in my view, an over-aggressive statement, and they send something back in three or four months, and whether, whatever it is, we just take it on. Otherwise, we're looking at, I think, months and years, not the least of which, we have some staff here who arguably from time to time would like to work on other issues. And there are a few of those in town. So that's my statement on this one.
Mr. O'Neill?
Certainly, I'm ready to move on. The only thing I'd add to the conversation is when we, when an amendment came to go from forty-five feet to fifty-five feet, we didn't convene a CRAB on Coleman to do that. We sent the planning commission. The planning commission made a recommendation that came to the planning committee, it came to council. We felt those folks were qualified to decide whether or not to increase that ten feet. I don't, I fail to understand why they're not qualified to decide if we decrease it by ten feet or twenty feet. So I respect all the comments that have been made, but we can't pick and choose. So I'm ready to move on, but I just felt like we'd be remiss if we didn't say that.
Thank you. Yes, one comment for you, Mr. George?
I've heard a couple times now about planning commission members are qualified, and it shouldn't be thought of as not being qual, not qualified. I don't know why someone would say such a thing. That's not the case at all. They're great folks, they care deeply about this town, they volunteers, and they're appointed by us. My reference was the fact that we've arrived at some pretty significant things over the course of years, and it's worth it. Okay? And Mr. O'Neill, you made a comment about pick and choose. Since I've come back on this council the past six months, all we've done is pick and choose. Whatever way the wind blows. Next month, we can bring a dartboard, put stuff on and blindfold you, and you can throw darts. You can pick and choose. Okay? Tough decisions, like Ms. Stokes-Marshall says, not for now, but for the future. We can't keep growing out everywhere. So again, let me get back to the point, though. If any member of the planning commission is watching this or hears this and has misconstrued my comments, then they are misunderstood, and I'll be happy to talk to any of them, which I get to take part, obviously, in appointing those great folks. They do a heck of a job, and they have to read a lot of material, and they have to spend some long meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. I heard that, lots of great discussions. Moving on, planning new business, Ms. Farrell? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
The first three items actually that we have under planning new business have all been requested for deferral. The applicant had previously requested, sent in a request for deferral for sixty days, and sixty days has expired. They would like to extend that deferral. He did not indicate a period of time. I will tell you that the way our code reads, it does say that if readings are not finalized after six months, they shall be null and void. So the greatest amount of time that you could potentially extend this to would be to your August meeting, unless the applicant makes sure to, would prefer to come back in July.
Move for deferral. Items one, two, and three.
Yes, till August. So have a motion and a second for deferral of items one, two, and three. Any discussion? Comment?
Would I have the ability, if I wanted to, to move this match back on to July, so about four, two?
Okay, so no later than August, is, I think, what he's asking.
So it would be no later than August? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the eyes carried. Item number, okay, item number four?
This has also been requested for deferral, items four and five. This is annexation of zoning of properties located at the corner of Myrick and Rifle Range Road. With this particular request, the property owner would like to submit a comprehensive plan request that could be considered simultaneously. That will be heard by the planning commission in July, and by you in August. So this one, too, would be a deferral.
Move for deferral of items four and five.
We have a motion for the deferral of items four and five. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the eyes carried. Item number six?
This is an annexation. This is fifteen single-family homes, as well as HOA property for Sun Chaser subdivision located on Highway forty-one, and recommended by your annexation.
Second. We have a motion and a second for first reading. Any discussion? Good job, Mr. Smith. Let's keep bringing them in. All in favor?
Aye.
First reading, ordinance number one, four, zero, four, zero, and ordinance providing the annexation of fifteen single-family homes, a homeowners association lot in private right-of-way, known as Sun Chaser Lane and Sun Chaser subdivision located on U.S. Highway forty-one.
Item number seven?
This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan. It is same as the request to amend the PD, which is item number eight, plan development. This would be to change the land use from waterfront gateway to high-density neighborhood. For three parcels of land, we held a appellate hearing earlier in the meeting, and has been recommended for approval by the planning commission and the planning committee.
Move for first reading of item seven.
Second. I have a motion and a second for first reading. I do understand we have a speaker signed up.
Stuart White, sir.
Can I have a question?
Oh, comment first, yes, Mr. White.
Sorry. Mr. White, sir, you have anything to say? I just, oh, okay.
No, I'm just here for questions.
No, 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 okay, Mr. Garge?
This piece, there are a couple of small hammocks out front, little islands. I wanted to make sure that, I know years ago, we put something in the law to protect those, that those are protected as well, and there's no intent to build any structures out of those.
That's right. No vol. plays, right, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for first reading of item seven and eight. Further discussion, Mr. Farrell?
Just a clarification. So this'll increase the density?
Yes.
And then, is there a height? Does it go up to seventy-five feet, or eighty feet?
Eighty feet is a low height.
Okay, is it gonna exceed that?
Eighty?
Yeah. Okay.
Should be a hundred. So many dollars.
Okay, any further comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, now it's Gary, move for, for, Eric, I'm sorry.
First reading, ordinance number one, four, zero, four, one, and ordinance to amend the town of Mount Pleasant comprehensive plan, two thousand nine through two thousand nineteen, future land use by changing the land use designation from waterfront gateway to high-density neighborhood, three parcels of land located on Linga Way, identified by TMS numbers five, one, four, zero, 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 one, nine, five, one, four, zero, 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 two, one, zero, and five, one, four, zero, 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 two, one, one.
Under old business, item number one. Oh, if I got a question?
First reading, ordinance number one, four, zero, four, two, and ordinance to amend plan development, ordinance zero, two, zero, six, nine, pertaining to the Eastport Village Plan Development.
Thank you. Sorry to rush you. Item number one, under old business, final reading for an ordinance providing the annexation in Bell Point Drive.
Yes, this was previously deferred as a request to the applicant. The sixty days deferral has expired, and so this is moving forward for final reading along with item number two, which is the zoning for the same property to area-wide business.
Your final reading, items one and two.
Second. I have a motion and a second on items one and two. Any discussion? Comments? All in favor? And the eyes carried.
Final reading, ordinance number one, four, zero, one, nine, and ordinance providing the annexation of approximately one point zero six acre portion of approximately nine point three seven acre parcel of land, known as Track B, located at eighty-seven Bell Point Drive, and identified by TMS number five, five, six, zero, 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 two, seven, eight. Final reading, ordinance number one, four, zero, two, zero, and ordinance to zone AB, area-wide business district, approximately one point zero six acre portion, and approximately nine point three seven acre parcel of land, known as Track B, located at eighty-seven Bell Point Drive, identified by TMS number five, five, six, zero, 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 two, seven, eight.
Thank you. Item number three, final reading for rezoning L one, Light Industrial and Bell Hall Plan Development.
This is rezoning from Light Industrial to Bell Hall Plan Development to allow for light industrial uses as well as recreation uses.
Your final reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Final reading, ordinance number one, four, zero, three, four, and ordinance to rezone from LI, Light Industrial District to PD, Plan Development District, Bell Hall Plan Development, approximately six point eight six acre parcel of land, known as Long Point Commerce Center, horizontal property regime, located at five, three, nine, five, four, three, and five, four, seven, Long Point Grove.
Item number four, final reading of amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Items four and five, the applicant has requested deferral, I assume for thirty days, Mr. Papelka? For thirty days on items four and five.
Move for deferral of items four and five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deferral on items four and five. Any discussion?
I'd just like to ask a question. I know that the Long Point, I've worked closely with the developer to reach decisions that included the roads, and I was just wondering, you know, if there are any issues with that? I don't see any representatives here.
Not that I'm aware of. And Mr. Papelka had already submitted a plan, a plan in commission for this coming month. It won't be able to proceed now because it hasn't had final reading, but everything that was submitted was to be, I think, with everything that was included in this plan development with respect to how the road would be designed.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for the deferral. All in favor?
Aye.
And the eyes carried. Moving on to committee reports. ATAC, Combinations Tax.
Madam Mayor, thank you. There was no meeting, nothing reported.
Annexation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have first reading of the ordinance of providing the annexation of three parcels of land located on Weaver Circle and Hungernick Boulevard, and also first reading of ordinance providing annexation of fifteen single-family homes, homeowners association lot in private right-of-way, known as Sun Chaser Lane and Sun Chaser subdivision located off U.S. forty-one. By unanimous vote, the annexation committee recommended approval of the annexation request.
Thank you.
This concludes my report.
Thank you. Bits and purchases.
Madam Mayor, there was no meeting, not the report.
Economic Development Committee.
Madam Mayor, we did not meet, no report.
Finance?
Madam Mayor, the first one, a long time, no report.
Fire committee?
Madam Mayor, we did not meet, but I just want to give a little report. We had twenty-one fires in the town, one hundred and fifteen medical call-outs, and two hundred and forty-seven others, for a total of six hundred and eighty-three, number of calls for our good guys at the fire department. That's my report.
So twenty-one fires, but four hundred and fifty medical responses.
Right.
Wow. Thank you. Human Resources? No meeting? Patriots Point Development Authority, we did meet. We are continuing to work on the proposals for the development of the fifty remaining acres. We have not got anything back on that to share with you yet. Planning Committee, Ms. Thomasine Stokes-Marshall.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one action item and several items to report on. The action item is a consideration of a text amendment to require Commercial Design Review Board approval of all developments subject to commercial design review. The committee recommends that the town move forward with this text amendment, with an exception for economic development properties. And before I put that in the form of a motion, one of the things I'd just like to comment on is that with the change, this change that's being recommended, the amendment, there are a number of different entities that this change will affect. I mean, I supported it, but I think before we move forward and finalize it, that we should at least afford the opportunity for, again, the stakeholders to have input into the process in terms of how this change will impact.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes-Marshall. So that's a motion to accept the text amendment, what you have some considerations, just for clarification?
That is correct. You know, I think that there are members from several entities in our community in terms of commercial developers, you know, that this could potentially impact and affect them and their businesses. And I would just like to ask that before we finalize this, changing this amendment, that we at least provide the opportunity... that we at least provide the opportunity to get some feedback and input before we make the change.
And how do you envision that to happen?
Well, I would give consideration to maybe holding some kind of meeting or forum and notifying stakeholders and allowing them the opportunity to at least be made aware of the changes and providing them with an opportunity to respond.
Thank you. Thank you. Other? I have a motion. Can I get a motion for discussion? A second, I mean.
Second.
Okay, I have a second for discussion. Mr. Carrier?
The Design Review Board is in effect already. We have the personnel there. Would it be proper, would it be acceptable to just put a notification that this is going to go into effect June, with June submittals to the planning department, or later, or whatever staff considers adequate for that? I mean, is that how you're asking for this to happen? I mean, stakeholder, getting together stakeholders is, that seems like a pretty heavy job.
I mean, when we initially disbanded, well, we never disbanded, but we set up a process where the staff was doing it.
Right.
Okay? And at the, and there were reasons for that, and it was well-embraced by the people that would be, were being impacted by the previous way that that was being handled, okay? So, I'm just saying that we're looking at amending this now, that there could be ramifications that would affect stakeholders.
Well, Ms. Thomasine Stokes Marshall, since we've talked so much about the Planning Commission, perhaps they could hold a public hearing and stakeholders could be invited.
I think that at least provides an opportunity if nothing else.
So, we have a motion, a second, other comments? Mr. Nichols?
When I was just whispering to the town minister, I was asking about the process. Does this ultimately require two readings from council as well as a Planning Commission situation? Can we not direct the Planning Commission to request?
Have a public hearing.
A public hearing, it'd have the stakeholders come and appear.
That would work.
And I put that in the form of a motion to amend, your motion to include the stakeholders in that process.
Do we have a second to the amended motion?
Second.
We need to vote on the amended motion first. So, all in favor of the amended?
Aye.
Against? Ayes carry. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure that it's clear, yet again, we're going to affect future businesses that are going to want to invest and improve and open and do business in the Town of Mount Pleasant by no longer making it an option to bypass the design, Commercial Design Review Board. And it's my understanding the exclusion of economic development property is in this motion, is that correct, Madam Mayor? Which I think is a good notion. My only concern that I would want to bring up, among others, for fellow council members, one, the timeline that we're doing it, I understand it's going to have a first reading and a second reading, but what about the small business? I mean, who's going to stand up for the small business owner? Who wants to open up a gelato shop or improve, you know, the town and open up a small business? Time is money, and I just, I'm just concerned that we're not looking out for the small business owner who, and I speak not from, as I said at the committee meeting, council committee meetings, I'm one of those people who've done this five separate times in five separate municipalities with five separate ribbon-cutting ceremonies, and I witnessed and was, I'll even say, a victim of a delayed, slow process that cost us significant amounts of extra money and delayed time in opening our small business, Madam Mayor. And I just, I think we have a responsibility to speak up and look out for the small business guy who's trying to just simply open up a business and live his dream here in this great town of Mount Pleasant.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments? We have an amended motion, a second that's been voted on. We have speakers signed up on this issue.
Ashley Woody?
Hi, Ms. Woody's actually, uh, kind of a big of her daughter, so she guys, I just give her comments for. I am Carmen Scott. I live at five-oh-six Royal. Ms. Woody lives on Front Street. She's my neighbor, but we share the same concerns, and I can speak from a different experience. I have to travel a lot in my work, and I have an opportunity to see a lot of beautiful places around the country. I also see a lot of really awful, ugly architecture, and my suspicion is that those places do not have a Commercial Design Review Board that overlooks those types of buildings that are being built in these otherwise really beautiful communities. I don't see how this harmed us. I only see how this does good things for our beautiful community, and I think that if we were to place a timeline on the Commercial Design Review Board within which they would have to act on a certain, a certain proposal, then I think Mr. Smith's fears would be alayed and we'd all be in a better situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Gary Shaheed. And Tex Small.
We don't need to give our name and address again?
Yes, you do.
Tex Small, twenty-three-oh-six Palm Boulevard, down on Palm, South Carolina. Let me just say that I never spoke to Mark Smith, but I did speak to several others about this issue of what we've talked about tonight, openness, inclusiveness, transparency, a seat at the table, an opportunity to get your point of view, and that's all I was hopeful for, and I think that this is a wonderful way to do it, and I'll save my remarks for the Planning Commission, so.
Thank you, Mr. Small.
But I applaud you, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Smalls, you can always call me as well.
And, and, and Mr. Smalls, that didn't come from Gary Santos, it came from me, just so you know. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to speak?
Thank you, ma'am.
I didn't plan to say anything, but on this topic, I have to agree with comments that were made earlier about transparency and people need to be able to see what's coming. That might solve some of the issues that we've been going through previously this evening, but there is one building, brand-new, hasn't opened up yet, on Chuck Dolly Boulevard, that I bet if the plant, if the, the review board took a look at it, they wouldn't allow it. That building is an embarrassment, so I hope that we, that this will alleviate things like that happening. In general, I think our area deserves much better architecture than what we're getting, so I hope that this will help that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We have a motion and a second. Come up and vote, please. Mr. Carrier?
Aye.
Mr. Gar?
Aye.
Mr. Glasson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
My apologies, Mr. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Ms. Stokes Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Page?
Aye.
And the ayes carry. The report?
Okay. My first report item is a presentation from the South Carolina Battleground Preservation Trust. Mr. Doug Bostick with the South Carolina Battleground Preservation Trust gave the committee a brief presentation of surveys of Civil War fortification sites they are conducting throughout Charleston County. There are several sites in Mount Pleasant that the SC, BPT, would like to include and will be coordinating with the town on these sites. Staff update on zoning use table amendments. The public hearing on the zoning code amendments will be held at the June eighteenth Planning Commission meeting. Town council will hold a public hearing in July on changes to the land development regulations. Final adoption is anticipated in late September or early fall. Last item to report on is staff's update on two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan update. Two concurrent public meetings were held on May the twenty-ninth. Input received at these meetings, along with recommendations from the Planning Committee, will be reviewed by the Planning Commission at the special committee on June the twelfth. I know, I just like to comment on the two meetings. I think they were well represented. The information that was provided by our planning department was certainly in a setup and displayed in a manner that provided our residents to have input into the process of their concerns and what they would like to see the town look like moving forward and as we update the comp plan. I have to say, you know, hearing that when we look at the total numbers of our residents that attended the two simultaneous meetings, that we only had about a hundred and fifty out of a town population of seventy-some-odd thousand people, and we're looking at revisiting and making changes to a document that actually maps out the future of the town for the next five, ten years, and on seventy-three thousand people, we only get a hundred and fifty people, and I know the kind of work and effort and energy that our planning department put into these presentations. So, you know, I wonder what does that say about our residents when they have and they're providing the opportunity for them to have input? I do applaud that hundred and fifty that did show up.
Thank you.
And that completes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you always for your hard work. Police Legal Judicial, Mr. Demora?
Thank you, Mayor. Items one and two. The first is an extension of a lease agreement for our temporary fire station six as we prepare for the construction of our new station at the Carolina Park. You'll see this item again under Council New Business. You'll also see under Council New Business, an update to our stormwater ordinance so we can prepare for that fee to be billed on the county tax bill.
Thank you for that. Public Services?
No meeting. Just want to let everybody know that Public Services has been handling the Tuesday in the park. We had one during this meeting in last week, as well as, I assume, they assisted with the Sweetgrass Basket Event. Those guys and gals just have a positive attitude in rough working conditions, and obviously, they reflect through the department head, and I'm very grateful to be the chair of that committee, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier, Recreation Committee?
Mayor and council rec, did meet. We did recognize that Mount Pleasant Artists Guild for a mural painted at the Marion Brown Center on Royal Avenue. If you haven't seen it, please go by and see it, it is pretty spectacular. The committee approved a new position for the senior center, and I'll describe that in detail before the final budget reading tonight. We also approved the Fast Pass program for the senior center. For the month of May, we did eight-hundred-and-eighty-three swim lessons. That may not sound very significant, but in a town surrounded by water, anytime we can have that kind of participation in swimming is pretty significant. For the month of May, we had twenty-seven-hundred youth and a thousand adults participate in athletic leagues, and the senior center current membership is now at over twenty-seven-hundred, and the tennis center membership is over nine-hundred. We're sure doing a lot of recreation for a lot of folks in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier. Transportation Committee, Mr. Demora?
Yes, Mr. Morrison, will you take Sweetgrass Basket Park?
Sure.
We have one action item from last week's meeting. Staff provide an update of an accelerated construction schedule for the entirety of Sweetgrass Basket Parkway, Phase Four-A, which includes Four-A-one and Four-A-two, if you've heard us talk about that before. That lies between Hanlon Road and Porche's Bluff Road. Given council's commitment to fund and expeditiously construct this facility prior to the new Jenny Moore Lane campus opening next August twenty-fifteen, staff requested authorization to immediately proceed with right-of-way acquisition for the following tracks denoted on the associated roadway design plans. This includes track numbers eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-nine, and forty, and we need a motion in this regard, and if you want to look at any of the specific tracks, we have graphics for that also.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for the approval of the right-of-way acquisition for Sweetgrass Parkway. Any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Mayor, we authorized Mr. Demora to, to a certain amount, not have to bring back right-of-way acquisition to this council, correct?
Yes, sir, that was done last year. There was a resolution adopted by council to handle these improvements. I don't know that any of these tracks go over the threshold.
Great, great.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes carry. Water Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll do Water Works and Water Supply, if that's okay. The May Commission meeting, Mount Pleasant Water Works Commissioners approved amendments to the cost-recover policy. They also approved advertising for the proposed operating twenty-fifteen in capital budgets, fifteen and sixteen rates, charges, fees, and operating policy updates. Ads were placed in Amoltry News, posted on the website and Facebook. Public hearing was on the proposed budget, rates, and fees were held on June fifth at the Water Works Operations Center. Madam Mayor, there were no attendees from the public and no comments have been received as of yet. And Water Supply Committee meeting, Mr. General Manager Clay Duffy presented the fiscal year twenty-fifteen budget document and strategic plan update. That concludes my report, no action.
Thank you. I guess we need to figure out a way to get them riled up over there and make those citizens attend those meetings. Administrator's report, Mr. Demora?
Thank you, Mayor. Announcing to you, to council, and to the public, one vacancy, it's a lodging vacancy on the Commissions Tax Advisory.
Thank you. Moving right along, Council New Business, we need to finish up. Number five, a resolution approving the amendment to lease agreement between the Town of Mount Pleasant.
Move to adopt a resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a resolution to extend the lease at Berkeley Electric Co-op. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes carry.
Resolution one-four-zero-six-one.
Item number six is first reading, ordinance to amend Chapter fifty-two, Mount Pleasant Code, an ordinance pertaining to the Stormwater Management Utility Program.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for first reading. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes carry.
First reading, ordinance number one-four-zero-four-three. An ordinance to amend Chapter fifty-two, the Mount Pleasant Code, an ordinance pertaining to the town's Stormwater Management Utility Program.
Item number seven, a resolution to designate a newly constructed roundabout at the intersection of Walton Miller Drive and Mathis Ferry Road as Army Circle.
Move for approval of the resolution?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes carry.
Resolution one-four-zero-six-two.
Under old business, Harrison Goodwin, final reading, an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt a budget for the Town of Mount Pleasant for fiscal year July first twenty-fourteen through June thirtieth twenty-fifteen. Mr. Carrier, I believe you want an amendment?
Yes, ma'am, we have an amendment to that before we do final reading, and that's to change the budget ordinance one-four-zero-three-seven as follows, to appropriate thirty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars in the general fund contingency for a senior service center recreation specialist. That concludes my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the rest of the final reading of budget. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Hope I do this right. I'm going to also ask to amend the ordinance as recent, do I need to vote to accept this amendment?
Let's move on the First Amendment.
We don't want to talk?
And then it'll be for the entire.
Okay, so, we're going to vote on the First Amendment to the budget, not the final reading? So, all in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes carry. Mr. Nichols, I believe you have another amendment to the budget?
Yeah, I'm going to try and do this right. I'd like to move that we amend the ordinance to, to include a five-k amount from the general fund for Charleston Moves. I'd like to read a letter that was addressed to you, Mayor Page.
I'll second his motion for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and discussion?
Can I read the letter now? Okay, it says, Dear Mayor Page, a Charleston Moves organizational purpose is to create a bike-friendly region that's healthy, active, and a fun place to live, work, and visit. We're about creating community transportation connections, making it easier for people to choose to bike or walk, and some who have no choice but to bike or walk. They've worked proactively with the staff of the Town of Mount Pleasant in the creation of bike-ped-friendly Coleman revitalization plan, the installation of bike lanes on Highway seventeen access roads, helped to realize completion of the Battery to the Beach route through town, and more recently, helping to secure permanent bike-ped path to the new Highway forty-one bridge over the Wando. In response to the growing challenges they face and requests for their input on a number of different projects, they want to increase their organizational capacity by hiring a full-time director. They asked to be very grateful to the town for a donation of five thousand dollars in that regard, and look forward to continuing to make the town of Mount Pleasant a more bike-ped friendly place to live, work, and play. I'll also point out, obviously, we know somebody who's here in the audience is very active, that they also have a very active board of directors, and I have found them to be a delight to work with, and I do believe that they add value to the town of Mount Pleasant. Council will support this modest request.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the budget by five thousand dollar amount to Charleston Moves. Any other discussion?
So that's over and above the ninety-six thousand we have in the budget for bike-ped stuff, or is this just a?
This is a separate.
We don't have ninety-six in the budget for this year, we have about fifteen for. This is out of the general fund, this is just a five thousand dollar in donation.
No other category can be placed in other than general fund?
We have some leftover money in outside agency, but it's fine from general fund. It's appropriate. Mr. Glasson?
Never mind. It's kind of a moot point. If you don't agree with it in that last-minute five thousand, then you gotta vote on the whole thing, so it's fine. Vote it in. It's kind of a moot point to have a discussion, then that's fine. I wish all my requests to speak.
That's fine, because you could, but you could certainly vote against the amendment and vote for the whole.
But then it's already in there, and you're voting for it. It's fine.
No, it's not.
No, it's not in.
It's not in there.
Unless it's by majority.
Okay, if it's voted nine, eight to one to approve the amendment, and I vote no, and then I vote for the overall budget, it's in there.
No. Now, if you vote against the amendment.
Okay, my one vote's not going to cancel the overall.
Well, I mean, you may lose the amendment vote, yes.
What he's telling, what he's saying, though, he passes, it's in the budget. Then he votes for the budget, and he's voting for what he doesn't want to vote for.
Kind of like the property taxes.
It's not like Washington, D.C.
Wow. Challenges, challenges. All right, so we're voting for the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes? No, okay.
No.
You have one, no.
Two no's.
Two no's, thank you very much. As noted, Mr. Glasson and Mr. Carrier. Now, we have a motion and a second for the full budget.
Move for approval, final reading.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for final reading of the.
Includes the amendments.
Yes, ma'am, this includes the amendments of the fiscal year July first twenty fourteen through thirtieth twenty fifteen budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Eighty-seven, eighty-seven. No. One no. Eighty-seven million budget, where's the five hundred people lined up to speak? Oh. Final reading, ordinance number one four zero three seven, an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt a budget for the town of Mount Pleasant for fiscal year July one twenty fourteen through June thirty twenty fifteen.
Thank you. I do not believe we have any need to go into executive session, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for all your hard work.